Good morning. Called order, the December 19th, 2023 meeting of the Sleet County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
I would ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up here for approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of approval of the tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, the Health Department of Workforce Development Grant Contract. This contract funds are in the amount of $138,434 for KDHE. Contract has been reviewed by county councillor. Approval of MOU and talk group authorization for Ottawa County Health Center. Approval of county commission minutes for November the 28th, 2023. Approval of cereal malt beverage license number 150254 for Don Toro's Kitchen LLC. Approval of ARPA broadband grant agreement with Salina Grace Foundation. Approval of ARPA broadband grant agreement with Salina Public Library for youth robotics. Approval of ARPA broadband grant agreement with Salina Public Library for hotspot lending. Are there any commissioners who wish to pull something for further discussion? Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We will move right into our action items. Item number one.
Bid award for freezer with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Gotcha. Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Senior Services is requesting commission approval to award Poton Construction the bid for a walk-in freezer in the amount of $64,000. There were two bids received, JC Builders for $74,550 and Poton Construction for $64,000. The alternatives for action are deny the request, approve Poton Construction the low bid of $64,000, or suggest an alternative. Staff recommends that approve Poton Construction the low bid of $64,000. The budget impact is EIP funds for 2023 were approved in the amount of $40,000. North Central Area Agency on Aging ARPA Funds were a grant was received in the amount of $13,500, and then donor dollars will be used to offset the balance of $10,500. No agency funds will be spent out of the 2023 budget. And I'll take any questions.
Not a big deal, but why would, why wouldn't we go try to buy this freezer direct and then hire a construction company to put it in as opposed to letting them be able to mark it up too?
We're gonna have to do some stuff in the building to prepare it, to get it ready. We're gonna have to like move a doorway and different things like that. So it just seemed like it would be a better for me to have an actual person that comes in and can draw everything out and set it and get everything done with the door and the little bit of construction that we do have along with it.
Well, I agree with, I understand that, but it still doesn't answer my question as why we wouldn't try to buy the freezer from, direct from a supplier and then hire a construction company to install it. That was my question. So, any other questions?
Where is this gonna be located? I'm trying to picture it.
It's gonna be in our dry storage kitchen area.
Rosie, is this a permanent structure then, or is this, I'm trying to wrap my head around it. It's a walk-in cooler?
It is.
Walk-in freezer?
Yeah, it's gonna sit right beside our existing walk-in cooler, so it's just gonna be just like that, only just a little bit bigger.
It comes in panels?
It does come in panels. So, permanent, I mean, it could come out.
But the unit, the cooling unit is placed outside the building?
No, it's actually gonna be inside, in our dry storage kitchen.
Won't it be developing a lot of heat that it's?
It has a unit that goes outside that keeps it cool.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Where's that dry storage at exactly? Is it, when you come in the one door off of the circle drive there?
Yes.
Is it right off to your left?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any public comment? Bring her back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve RFA 2023-236 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the RFA 2023-236. Further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Fire truck purchase for Rural Fire District Number One with Justin Audi Assistant Fire Chief.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning. District One's existing unit, 107, is a 1986 Chevy that needs chassis replacement to continue with its service, has a first responder truck and a brush truck. The versatility and enhanced capabilities of the new chassis will provide aid in handling various emergencies in the District One response area. Three bids were received from Hillsborough Ford, Midway Motors, and Long MacArthur Ford. There is a current limited availability of vehicles to meet the specs for the project. Due to these limitations, District One is requesting permission to award Hillsborough Ford the lowest, or the project as the lowest bid of $58,204. There will be a six to eight month delivery time for the chassis. Once it's received, it will be outfitted with the existing bed and tank from Unit 107, and anticipated in-service date will be the fall of '24.
Questions? Concerns? Any public comment? Quiet today. All right. Bring her back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-228 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-228 as presented. Further discussion? All of those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Justin. Item number three.
2024 Rural Fire District Board Appointments with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commission. It is that time of year again. I do have all reappointments and one new appointment to the Board of Trustees for Rural Fire Districts One, Three, Five, Six, and Seven. It is state statute that there is a Board of Trustees that oversees each fire district that relays communications between yourself and the fire districts. Those board appointment terms are for two years. They will serve from January 1 of '24 to December 31st of '26. Each board ranges from five to nine members. These are volunteers. They have either served as a firefighter on those districts and have just stepped back from the firefighting role, or they serve in dual positions and they are both a firefighter and a board member at this time. Are there any questions on the appointments?
Any public comment? I'll breeze right through here. I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve Resolution 23-2397.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 23-2397 as presented. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you for your work. Item number four.
Air Service Incentive for RON Flight with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Last Tuesday, you heard a presentation from Tim Rogers from the Airport Authority and Gary Foss, the community's air service consultant, regarding an incentive that the community could offer to SkyWest Airlines to get them to change flight times for flights between Salina and Denver to what is called a Remain Overnight, or RON Flight. And commissioners at that time asked that this be brought back today as an RFA. It is staff's recommendation that we approve in concept the allocation of $400,000 from the county's ARPA funds for this purpose, subject to a firm deadline of February 27th, 2024, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Rogers is also in attendance.
I just wanna, you hit right on it, and this is ARPA funds, that had already been committed, if I'm not mistaken, to the Houston flight or one of the airport activities that didn't go through at this point and returned to us? Is that correct? That money was returned?
So, the Houston flight never got off the ground. Ba-dum-bum. So, we subsequently reallocated the funds, so this $400,000 is currently committed to the maintenance base at the airport. That is also not moving forward at this point.
And if I recall, and I'll ask Mr. Rogers this, but if we were to get, if this $400,000 is able to get us this RON, that's a step forward on, for the maintenance part of it too. Is that, you wanna, just dotting some i's and crossing some t's here for me?
Thank you, Chairman. Vidrickson and Commissioners, yes, the other attempts fell short in many ways for reasons beyond our control, but keep trying, keep trying to find that pathway that leads to a Houston flight. And this is that next, how do you utilize the funds that had been previously allocated and reuse or rework that agreement and kinda is another pathway to set the stage for a Houston flight? And this overnight flight is that key part to that, so that SkyWest Airlines sees Salina as an operational bridge, Denver, Chicago, and also we can start proposing and letting them see, and they start experiencing they need Salina as the bridge for Houston also. And the overnight flight is the key to that. They're just coming in, flying in and out during the day, there's no reason to have crews here overnight, a jet here overnight, and then flow jets between the three United hubs.
Are there further questions of Mr. Rogers from the commission, or?
Just a quick, one of the criterias I wanted to see, and I was glad that the administrator touched on the February 27th, 2024, is that, is that a doable date? Is that a definite, would know or not know by then?
It is, Commissioner. We are actually working towards January 31 to have the agreement in place. The draft agreement has been prepared, working with SkyWest Airlines in anticipation of having the full funding for the incentive and the agreement, and we've actually taken some of the comments that we've received previously, and one comment even with last week from the county commissioners, is how does this tie to the three-year EAS contract that's effective January 1? And I drafted this, and SkyWest has indicated this is acceptable, but SkyWest initiates the non-stop Salina Two from Denver Ron flight as soon as possible, and that flight will operate for the duration of the airline's three-year Salina USDOT EAS contract. So I've tried to take the comments previously by the Board of County Commissioners and staff and others and incorporate that into the agreement that we are moving ahead with. Looking to have that in place by January 31, and I think the February 27 deadline is well we can do, we can get done.
That's good for me to hear because I think I was, one of my concerns was who decides what's profitable and when they can pull things out, but if they've said that it's the three years, then, good.
And I guess I still, you know, I spoke last week and, you know, I said, I told you I wasn't a fan of incentives.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm still having a hard problem with that. I still don't see why, you know, SkyWest was here, why we can't stand on our own merits and have to give somebody an incentive for, to come back to a place that was profitable for them before. You know, even though we get this, you know, if we pass this RON, I mean, I still don't think there's a guarantee we're gonna get that maintenance hub. I mean, it's just like we talked about last week about dangling a carrot. I mean, I think that's all we're doing is dangling that carrot, and maybe they'll take it, maybe they won't. I'm still concerned about the pilot shortage. You know, there's no guarantees on that. Like I said, you know, don't get me wrong, I support the airport, I support the air service, I think it's a great thing for Salina, and it's been really good for us, but I just, I've got a problem with this one here just because of, you know, because of those there. I also look at, you know, we've, we've had this three times. This is the third time that we, they've come back, you know, the Houston flight, the maintenance hub. Now we're, you know, we're back trying to get it for the other, so I'm sorry, I just can't, I can't support this.
And I share some of your concerns, Commissioner Hay, and I voiced some of them last week, although in my mind, the more I thought about it, the pro-economic development piece is probably gonna, is gonna carry the day for me, and I'm gonna be supportive of this. But, but your points are well taken, and I get them, but I think that the economic development part of it just outweighs the negatives at this point.
Do we have any further comments from commissioners, either for or against, one way or the other? If not, it appears that we will have some public comment.
Northern Atlas, Salina. Southwest Airlines is a private for-profit business. If they need startup money, they can go to the bank like I do.
We're not talking about Southwest Airlines.
Well, they're involved. The taxpayers are not a bank. Santa Claus is not coming this year, not next year either. The taxpayers want a return on their investment. Charity begins at home. It's 2023, there's a new sheriff in town. They're called taxpayers.
All righty, thank you.
You know, Mr. Chair, I, I hear Commissioner Hay and what he has to say, but incentives are far from anything new, and they're done all the time bringing businesses in, whether it be tax abatements or tax deferments or a lot of different tools. This is just a tool that we have to entice someone to bring something to Salina in a different fashion, and because we are competing with a lot of communities our size for this same type of service.
Very true. Further public comment?
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Renee Duxler, President and CEO of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to be able to come forward during public comment to express the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce's support of this, certainly our business community and the positive benefit that it would have for them. You all have heard me talk extensively about workforce development and the way that we are gonna have to attract and retain talent like we've never had before, and I certainly do see this as something that could help towards that effort and making us more competitive. It's certainly not gonna make or break whether somebody, you know, moves to Salina or not, but I think having that sort of connectivity, especially with a younger generation that does want to travel, wants to live in a place with a lower cost of living but be able to travel, I think all of the things outlined by Tim and Gary last week, as well as some of those benefits, make this a very strong case for economic and workforce development. Again, Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors does support this, so, thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Duxler. Anyone else wish to address the commission? I will bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-233 as presented.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-233. Any further comments or discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion passes four one with Mr. Hay dissenting. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. We will move to item number five.
Natural gas agreement for 2024 with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Morning, Phil.
Good morning again, Commissioners. So, over the last two years, I have learned far more about the natural gas markets than I ever cared to know. In November of this year, we had a concept discussion with the commissioners regarding our continued purchase of wholesale natural gas from Symmetry Energy Solutions, and at that time, you directed staff to bring back a proposed agreement with them, but also to research whether additional county facilities could go on to what's called gas transport, which is the wholesale pricing. We looked at Roden Bridge and Expo Center, and Expo Center does not have a sufficient volume to move to gas transport. There's a minimum amount necessary under the Kansas Gas Service tariff. Roden Bridge does meet that minimum, but since the winter storm two years ago, Kansas Gas Service now has been granted the authority to levy what is called a securitization fee to allow somebody to go to gas transport. And we were able to get that fee waived at the new jail because the old jail had been on gas transport, but they would assess that for moving Roden Bridge because they have been the provider historically at Roden Bridge. So, that would essentially eat up two and two-thirds years of the potential savings to pay that fee. So, what I came down to after numerous discussions is recommending to you a one-year agreement with Symmetry for the existing facilities that we've had with them, which would be Sheriff's Office, although a different Sheriff's Office, Senior Services, and the Health Department. And then revisit that at the end of next year after we have some experience at the new building, see if we wanna potentially go to a longer-term agreement. Also, though, move Roden Bridge to a different rate structure that Kansas Gas Service has found that would actually save an estimated amount of about $1,900 next year. We could then, if we do look at going to a longer-term agreement with Symmetry in the future, we could then reexamine the costs and the payout for what it would take to get Roden Bridge onto gas transport. One other wrinkle, however, is you can purchase gas, when you, when you purchase gas wholesale, you can purchase it either on the spot market, which is what we have been doing historically, so it's priced every month. There is a gas industry publication that publishes a price for that month, and we pay that amount plus a markup. You can do it that way, and that's the, that's the recommended agreement going forward. You can also purchase at a fixed price. And in discussions with Symmetry, the fixed price makes some sense from a budget standpoint and the fact that right now the gas markets are relative. and the fact that right now the gas markets are relatively low compared to where they've been over average last two to five years. So, locking in, in some of that price has potential advantages, certainly from stability, possibly also from price. Gas markets fluctuate rapidly. So, when I wrote the RFA last week, the Symmetry was quoting a price of $3.99 per million metric British thermal unit for fixed-price gas. As of yesterday at 1:11 P M, the updated price is $3.68. So, it has dropped 31 cents per M M B T U over the last week. And our account manager said, "The prices are down due to a combination of milder winter weather so far, strong storage inventories and healthy ongoing production levels." So, all of that, I know it's confusing because there are four different variables, but staff's recommendation is that you allow me the authority to, by DocuSign, enter into an agreement with Symmetry to continue what we've been doing for another year, but then purchase 50% of our anticipated volumes at that fixed price so long as, at the time they send me this DocuSign, it's no more than 5% above that $3.68 per M M B T U. And that we also move Roden Bridge, keep them on Kansas Gas Service, but move them to a different rate plan. So, as I said, I know that's complicated. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Well, I don't have a question, but I have a comment that I saw on the news last night that Kansas, the cost of natural gas in Kansas is the eighth most expensive state to operate in in the United States. So, we're unfortunate in that regard.
I got one question and you have to help me through this, but you have the ability to have a fixed price and purchase. If you projected that price over previous years, usage, higher, lower? I mean, as far as budgeting, I can see it's a great tool and if...
It is. So, at $3.68, if that's what it ends up being, or, you know, within 5% of that, that would be lower than the two-year average, but slightly higher than 23, what we paid in '23.
Okay.
Which is part of the reason for only locking in 50% of it. There are two really rationales for that. One is to not lock yourself up if the price goes down. And the other is also to not overbuy because we're dealing with, you know, what we think we're going to use at the new jail. We don't actually have an experience. And so, if it does turn out to be a mild winter, you don't want to overcommit yourself.
That helps me a lot. Thank you.
That 50%, do we get to pick the 50% when we want to use it? Or is it, how is that done? Is it, we give you the 50% first and then it goes into the contract?
Yes. So, it's, we would contract to, to purchase that, that 50% and, and if it stays 70 degrees all winter, then we're kind of screwed, right? Because we've contracted to buy that amount. But if it's 20 all winter and we end up using what we think we're going to use based on the design of the building and what we've done historically, then we would use that 50% volume first and then buy the increments monthly.
Thank you.
That brings another question. How do you know, you have to use 100%? You have a 50% base. This is how much we will pre-purchase. What if that ends up being 70% of your gas usage for the year?
Then that's great. You're not having to buy as much in the spot market.
But then you're, then you're not buying 50%, you're buying 70%.
Yes. It's the amount, the amount, when I say 50%, the, when I say 50%, it's not 50% of what we're going to buy. It's buying 50% of the projected volume.
Okay.
That's a fixed amount. Sorry. Thank you.
And I have to assume that this isn't designated to strictly a certain period of time, months, in winter months type thing, or this is, this is a...
It's a 12-month period.
12-month, right. I would have assumed so, but...
Quick question here on, in regards to the new jail and the old jail. If this symmetry and if we have the gas service there providing gas at the old jail, are we just gonna cut it off completely there and have no gas services there if this all transfers to the new jail?
No, we would transition the old jail back to Kansas Gas Service because we anticipate that the volume there will drop dramatically in January. And that was sort of the deal that, that we cut with Kansas Gas to get the, the securitization fee waived, was that they would get that back. But, you know, for whatever period of, or whatever, you know, things we need to keep running, hopefully will not be a lot in that facility after January, but, you know, keeping it minimally-conditioned over the winter, there would be some usage, which sort of, we'll get back to that in the next agenda item, actually.
All right. Anything else? Anyone else? Is there any public comment regarding this contract? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-232 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-232. Further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Phil. We'll move to item number six.
ARPA progress and reallocation with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Morning again, Phil.
All right. Third time's charm, right? So, last week, the Commission discussed in concept discussion where we are with the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund that we received through the American Rescue Plan Act and directed staff to come back with some possibilities that focused on what we could do to utilize remaining funds to best benefit the county as opposed to other agencies in the community. We've done a lot in the community. So, staff recommendation is to do some shifting of money, small dollar amounts, $987 between three different line items, projects. And then four bigger recommendations. One, to move some additional funds to the courtroom projects so that we can go ahead and close that out through the ARPA fund and, and not have to dip into county capital. Two, to address the issue that we were just talking about, utilities for 2024 as we transition various facilities, making sure that we have adequate funding for that. So, reserved about 20,000 for that potential. I don't know that we'll need that. Certainly hope we don't need all of it, but just to have a cushion there in case we do need that. Third would be to purchase an ambulance for Salina Fire EMS. Per our agreement with the City of Salina, we pay an amount toward the service for EMS in the rural areas, but then we also contribute the cost of an ambulance. We, it's generally sort of like one ambulance per year. There are a few years where they don't purchase one. Lately, they've been doing rehabs, so it's not buying a whole new ambulance. It's been refurbishing. They would like to add an ambulance to the fleet. So, the city manager approached me about this a while back and said, "Listen, we want to do this. We know it's a cost burden for the county. We could have some discussion about, you know, how to phase it in over time, et cetera." And when the Commission said last week, "Oh, we want to spend ARPA funds on, on things that benefit the county", I thought, hmm, well, there, that's a good one because it's directly related, it's public health, you know, pandemic recovery kind of things. So, recommend that purchase. And then remaining funds, including anything that we would save out of the utilities and anything else that would come up over the next few months, go towards the joint study of downtown campus facilities. So, that's staff's recommendation. I'd be happy to answer questions or take additional direction from Commission.
I'll let someone else fire here. I'm still trying to get in my mind what I'm gonna say.
I appreciate the, thinking outside the box on the ambulance. That hadn't been on my radar, but that makes sense. So, thank you for at least bringing that to us.
And I just want to say thank you for, you know, listening to us and whatever, you know, trying to reallocate some of this. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Personally, I wish EMS would have been represented to help answer some questions that you might not have the answer to. Currently, they have eight ambulances. They want a ninth ambulance. They staff four of them frontline. The others are used for transfers and such or put in reserve in case they have mechanical difficulties. I understand that. I appreciate you stepping outside the box and tapping into the ARPA for us, allow us to help them. I just wish they'd been here to tell me who's gonna staff that ninth ambulance.
So, I will say, ambulances are hard to come by these days as well. So, one of the conversations that I had with the deputy fire chief over the last week was around timeframes. As you know, the federal ARPA funding, we need to have everything allocated by the end of '24 and then spent by the end of '26. Certainly don't think it's gonna be a problem to get an ambulance delivered by December of 2026. I mean, that's three years away. But, but it will not be here, they're pretty sure, by the end of 2024. So, if the Commission were to approve this recommendation, I would envision this as an agreement of some kind with the city that we would bring back, sort of further specifying exact dollar amounts. And we could have some of those questions answered around staffing at that time.
My thoughts are that if I were to say, "I'm not in favor of this," what are my thoughts? An alternative plan? And with that, I have none. So, therefore, I will be supportive of this and, and go back to my comments from last week, and that is, I don't want any money going back to Washington DC. And keep that right out here in central Kansas.
So, to put that in percent, are they gonna pay for the ambulance in upfront so they can use the ARPA money? Since it's, if we're looking at 2024, end of '24?
As long as we have it under contract by the end of 2024, we're good to spend it through 2026. Typically, my, and I'm kind of getting above my head, but my understanding is typically the way the ambulance purchases work is there's an amount upfront and then balance due upon receipt. So...
So, how much is an ambulance? Is it this $390,000? Is that...
Yeah. Right now, they're saying, and again, I mean, they'll have to go through a bid process and all that. So, I think that's why I would say this would end up being an agreement that would come back to the Commission. But based on their conversation with the manufacturer that they've dealt with over the last couple of cycles, they're quoting $390,000. We have a little bit of, of savings for next year that's already in the, what we've budgeted for next year because they're doing one of these rebuilds for next year. And so, the recommendation is to net that out and, and do an agreement with the city for like $3.68.
So, in other words, to cut to the chase, I mean, we're, we're gonna buy the ambulance and the city's gonna have ownership?
Yeah. And that's how it, it works currently.
Good, good, good. I'm, I'm lost on that one a little bit. That's how it works currently, meaning...
So, historically, the county operated EMS. In 1982, the EMS service, the county EMS service, shut down and transitioned to Salina Fire Department. And there's an agreement between the county and the city calling for us to make an annual payment for service and also to help with equipment, which has been interpreted over the last 40-plus years to be the replacement of the ambulances. So, that is something we budget for. As I said earlier, we have $230,000 in the budget for 2024 for a replacement ambulance. But again, that will be a rebuild, not buying a brand-new one.
All right. Is there public comment? I'm seeing none. I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-234 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-234. Is there further discussion, questions, answers? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We'll move to our informational items. Item number one.
Health Department update with Jason Tiller, the Health Department Director.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. So, this update will cover September 2023 to current. So, next slide. So, within our Health Education Department, our new health educator attended the Leadership Salina program this year and graduated from that. She also led to mental health first aid trainings for Health Department staff that also included a few county staff. And in the spring, our intent is to offer more of those trainings and to get more of the county staff involved and trained in mental health first aid, especially as many people deal with the public. Our, if you remember from a couple of years ago, we have an opioid dashboard. Well, that would be transitioning to become part of our current website over these next few months. And that move will also save us $16,000 a year that we were paying with other grant funds for that, that site that was hosting the opioid dashboard before. Speaking of opioids, we had received 240 doses of Narcan from K D H E, but because of the packaging having RX only, which meant it was for prescription, the health departments, and there were six locations across the state, could not distribute it, even though it was the same medication that is in the over-the-counter Narcan that you can buy off the shelf in C V S. So, we were, after some bit from K D H E, further instructed that we were to distribute it to first responders. to first responders. So, we split it three ways between Salina Fire, EMS, PD, and Sheriff, for them to either, you know, backfill what they've been using or to use as they see fit. And in conjunction with the PIO and the movie theater, we had an ad created to look at increasing vaccine acceptance that plays before movies. So, if you go to the movies here at the theater at the mall, you will see that ad playing there. Next slide. One addition to the slides that are in your packet, because this just happened yesterday, Annabelle has been doing a lot of work around mental health as well. And she was interviewed by KWCH yesterday about seasonal affective disorder, which does impact a lot of Americans this time of year. Holidays are part of it, as well as the shorter days. So, many of us at this point now are going to work in the dark and coming home in the dark, and, you know, that has an impact. And so, the link is there on the slide if you wish to see that interview, and there's some information there about seasonal affective disorder for people to be able to view, and we'll also have that up on our Facebook page as well. Next slide. So, maternal child health, also within our, the county website has launched their new Becoming a Mom page. We have an agreement, we provide Becoming a Mom services with McPherson County, and so they did a Safe Sleep Baby Shower that included 26 families for the McPherson community, conducted a crib clinic here in Saline County. Becoming a Mom is a training program for mothers, families that are pregnant up to the point where they give birth, and then starting in the spring, they'll also be doing what's called Incredible Babies, which is from birth on parenting classes. And they've been working with partners, county or community partners on that one as well. The implementation of Patagonia electronic health records, and I'll go into that a little bit more in a minute when I get to clinic. And then they've just got another, a new program as well that is called Bosom Buddies, which is mainly to assist MCH and WIC clients with some of the items for nursing needs. And those are the, tend to be the short-term, but somehow expensive items such as nursing bras, nursing pads, things like that. Childcare licensing, the state has been doing some rebranding of that program. So, at the state level, they're now called Childcare Licensing Specialists instead of surveyors. They did conduct a training with a nationally-known trainer for childcare providers, and had about 40 in attendance. Had a student intern over this last quarter for job shadowing, and they continue to collaborate with local agencies in Salina-McPherson to try and address childcare needs as well as barriers. Next slide. So, in October, the clinic conducted their annual community flu clinic, and we gave out about 400 flu shots. I mentioned the Patagonia electronic health record, that went live last week. And as many of you probably know, with any new software system, there are bugs and processes that take a little while to figure out, especially with this, because there were some processes that the, neither our staff nor the company could really try and nail down until the system went live. So, over the last week or so, they've been working on addressing some of those. So, we still have appointments, but please be patient if you're, you know, calling for appointments for services over in the clinic. We've had to space those out a little bit while we've also been conducting some additional training as services have been happening. But speaking of, we have flu vaccine, COVID vaccine, and RSV vaccine, and if you want to know which one's right for you, give the clinic a call, they will kind of talk you through those and get you set up to get those vaccines. Home health, as required by the state, launched what's called the Electronic Visit Verification. What that means is that when they arrive to a home to provide a service, it basically GPS locates that they are at that location that they're purported to be at as part of their verification of actually providing services to the places that, when they submit their claims for reimbursement, that they are supposed to be at. And this is for all home health agencies across the state. And believe it or not, home health after, I don't know, year or two are finally fully staffed now, so knock on wood that I, that we stay that way. Next slide, please. Something I don't talk about very much, but it's elevated blood lead. Kind of stumbled over that one and say that five times fast. And what that is, is for adults or children to have lead that shows up in blood tests, which means they've been exposed to lead somewhere. And there is no safe level of lead in the blood. On the left-hand side, the short-term and longer-term exposure are symptoms that can arise, although there are often no symptoms at all for lead exposure. And children under six are usually the ones that are the most at risk. So, having blood lead, or having lead in your blood, can cause developmental delays and other issues. And the other reason they're often more at risk is that they usually are closer to the ground and more prone to put things in their mouths that may contain lead. So, whether it's lead chip paint, lead-based toys from somewhere, contact with the environment, or if there happens to be lead in the water pipes, and that has been mixed with formula and, you know, ingesting lead that way. We have a staff member that conducts investigations for when someone does have, test positive for elevated blood lead, and she goes through all of the different possible exposure sources, trying to identify where the source is with the goal of trying to reduce and, and remove that exposure so that you can reduce the blood lead level. Now, on the right-hand side, I want to point out the fact that this was a recent recall from the FDA related to cinnamon applesauce and puree pouches. Not the normal place that you think of, of lead explo- or lead exposure, however, they did find lead in these applesauce pouches, and generally, it's going to be your young kids that are going to be, you know, consuming these and possibly exposed to lead. And so, we have circulated this on our Facebook as well and tried, and she has reached out to families that have been identified with elevated lead, and there was one who had consumed this product. But just to raise additional awareness about this for parents, so if you have this product on your shelf, and the link is on the slide, so that you can be able to check that out. And if you can't get to either one of these, if you just go onto Google and type in applesauce recall, it will usually come up as one of the first hits on there, and you can find out more about it, specific brands, et cetera. Next slide. So, one of the things that we are, are proud that we are able to do and continue to do is our academic partnerships with our universities, K-State, KU, Wichita State, Kansas Wesleyan. And over this last couple of months, we had another intern who was a master's in public health student complete her internship with us. And her, one of her projects was to start the draft for something that I've wanted to do for a long time, which was a Health Department annual report. So, she's got a pretty good shell that she developed as part of her project, and she has now finished her internship, and we will, after the end of the year, finish all of the additional information, statistics, and so forth. Part of that is sitting with each of the divisions, kind of review everything they have. It'll go for review to the Advisory Council as well, and then the intent is to publish this report, this first annual report really, at the end of January. As part of this partnership, I'm also on the Academic Advisory Board through both KU and K-State and attended their board meetings in this last quarter as well. Next slide. So, a couple of other things, at the KAC meeting a couple of weeks ago, I finished my role as called Board President for the last 18 months. Normally, it's a 12-month cycle, but our previous president had to step down, and so I'll be the past president for this year. Was also on a panel at KAC about elevating our communities through public health. A question that we had of the audience, which of course, for all of you, you've been to KAC, it's a very, it's a, it's a varied audience of people, and we asked, "What are the top three priorities regarding your community residents' health and well-being that keep you up at night?" And out of 71 responses, this, you can see the middle responses there, the bigger they are, the more people said, "Yes, this is what I'm concerned about," which was mental health, substance abuse, substance misuse, and then the other encircling items from there. And then, with the rest of the Kansas contingent, which is made up of KDHE and the representatives from the seven healthcare coalition regions, attended the National Healthcare Coalition Preparedness Conference the week right after Thanksgiving. Next slide. Budget-wise, at the end of November, we are at about 95% of our budget compared to 89% at the same time last year. The difference right now is between our grant revenue, or excuse me, our current revenue and our current expenses is about $38,981. But we also at, well, here in a couple of weeks, at the end of the year, will be filing all of our financial status reports for all of our grants, which is additional revenue for October and November that's not reflected here along with the revenue or expense in December. So, I expect that that's, those numbers will still, stay very close, if not the revenue to more offset the expense at the end of that. So, are there any questions at this point?
Nope.
I have none.
Nope.
I just wanted to say, tell Annabelle thank you. She did a great job. I watched it on Channel 12 this morning, and she, she did a great job, so.
I will do, thank you.
All right, thank you, Justin. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to item number two.
Commissioners comments?
I just have one comment that, wish everyone a Merry Christmas next week. There, I don't believe we have a meeting next week.
That's correct, I was going to get to that under announcements.
All right, well, we'll let, we'll leave that alone, I'm just trying not to step on myself here. Any rate, happy, Merry Christmas, and wish everyone a joyous and happy and prosperous and healthy New Year, so that's my, end of my speech.
Two things before I forget, kind of a to-do list for early in the year. We, we had talked a little bit about the Planning Commission, and everybody talks about, oh, you have to have so many people on it, and this is how it's written, but we wrote it. We created the parameters, so we can change the parameters. If you can bring back something for us to at least look at, with the possibility of making that a more manageable-sized commission, I'd appreciate it. The other thing is, and I know we didn't have enough ARPA funds to tackle some of the road projects like shilling east of Ohio is a concern for everybody, and we probably need to have some sort of study session on that. And I know because the city owns it on both sides and we own the road, I am talking the right, the right place this time, weren't I? Yeah. Anyway, just put that on your to-do list for whenever in the spring.
Anyone else? We'll move to, flip the page here, item number three.
Announcements.
Okay, Phil.
So, I was going to remind folks that most county facilities, including this building, will be closed next Monday and Tuesday for the holidays, so.
Perfect.
All righty. Next week, at, or at least, we'll be back on, on tap January the 2nd. It looks like we'll be looking at a road and bridge update, stalking awareness proclamation, slavery and human trafficking prevention proclamation also. So, any new business to be brought before the Commission? I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you for watching.